Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Town of Old Sabre zoning commission's meeting for Monday, January 2nd, 2025, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, First Floor Conference Rooms at 302 Main Street, Old Sabre. Roll call, myself, Mark Calzarella Chair, Jerry Lewis Vice Chair, John Henry Secretary, and regular commission members Bob Freeman and Laura Gray. Alternate members in attendance are Michael Kelly and on line is Brenda Dyson. We also have our clerk, Joanne Golly, as well as our CEO Officer Chris Costa, and the zoning commission legal representative Matt Willis. Minutes for approval from our last meeting, which was Monday, May 5th, 7:00 PM. I'll make a motion to amend.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any corrections or additions? None noted. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstains, passes 5-0-0. No correspondence other than what we have for the candidates. Okay. So go into continued public hearings, Whispering Winds, application for site plan approval for affordable housing development, it's CGS 830G to construct 12 dwelling units, 21,446 square foot in total, and retain existing 2,453 square foot single-family dwelling unit, and 1,274 square foot appliance repair business, 846 Middlesex Turnpike, Accessories Map 63, lot by restricted business B3 district. The applicant is Antonio Olivera, agent is attorney Edward Casella. The action is decision by 6-2 2025, or no later than 6-2 2025, where a 28 of 65 day extension used. Mr. Casella.
Good evening, Edward Casella, representing Joe Doines, Mossland. Good afternoon. Antonio Olivera, who is the property owner, says application of Whispering Winds LLC, which is the applicant for 830G development. We were here in April at a public hearing, and since that time, we've undergone a few plumber visions after responding to the town engineer, and most importantly, meeting with the fire chief and the fire marshal to address concerns that they had regarding fire protection on this site, because it is, it is on a well, so it's not on a public water. So I'm just having a little technical difficulties here trying to get the plans up. Just give me a moment. We want to keep it similar basics. I don't know why I didn't sign in, but I did.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
With us tonight, Antonio Olivera is here, along with Joe Verstig, who is a code and fire safety consultant that we hired to reduce this project and assist us in working with the fire department and the fire marshal to make sure that there's no issues regarding fire protection of the properties. As Joe will explain, we've made a few revisions. The updated plans, including those revisions, have been submitted to the Health District, which has turned around and reissued their approval based upon the updated plans for both the septic systems and the wells. There have been additional, there have been questions from attorney Willis. We responded to him, but I can give a simple overview of some of the big picture legal questions. This is a, as you know, this is a proposal for 12 new townhouse development units. There's one existing single-family house, and there's an existing commercial building on the property. The entire property is going to be subject to condominium, going to become a common interest community. So all of the units will be part of a single association, because there was concerns about what happens if wells, or septic systems fail, and are the affordable units, how are they going to bear the cost of it? And the answer is it's going to be the same cost to the, all the members of the association. So whether you're a market unit or an affordable, whether there's any issue regarding the property, the driveways, septic systems, the interiors of the building, stormwater, those are all going to be association type fees. Secondly, there were questions regarding the comparability of the units. Right now, there's two affordable units designated in each of the two buildings, two on the southern building, two on the northern building or the rear building. All of the units in the entire development are two-bedroom units. And all of the units range from 1,482 square feet to 1,522 square feet. And we have a mix of the square footages in those units. For the affordables, unit one is 1,482, unit four is 1,522, unit eight is 1,508 square feet, and unit 10 is 1,508 square feet. So that you could see they're all within the mix. One unit, unit one, has a first-floor master, one unit has a driveway and garage, and two of the units are located in the rear of the building. There's no requirement that all the units be exact. The affordable units just need to be comparable under 830G to the market rate units. And again, we've kind of provided a cross-section of all the different types of units and made them affordable. There's also no requirement that the unaffordable units be adaptable or handicap adaptable. So that we do have one adaptable unit, and it's not an affordable unit at this time. Why don't I turn it over to Joe now, and we can go through his site plan and show you some of the changes that have been made regarding the, you know, in particular, the access to fire and some of the other things.
What sheet are you working on?
I'll work off of, which one do you want? Do you want the grading, the site plan, the fire utility plan?
Let's just start with the zoning plan first, I think.
Yeah. I can zoom in. So this is your experience with the best. I can't do that. I can't change that up there.
You've got full screen.
I'm on full screen here.
Just so everyone can see the detail.
That's better.
Yeah. For the record, Joe Runge, professional engineer of Indigo here in Old Sabre. As I had mentioned, the current property has an existing single-family house that's in the northwest corner there, and also has the building where Beach Appliance is. That's just off the bottom of the page on the south. Both of those buildings are going to remain as they are. The single-family house is going to be on one of the units of the condominium association, so that'll be the 13th unit, right? And then there are six proposed units in each of the two buildings. You could see them shaded there, one on the, basically in the southwest area, and then one on the northeast area. The color coding of the units are the, are the affordable ones. The one adaptable one that Ed was talking about is in the upper building, and it's right there where the cursor is on the west side of that. In between all three residential buildings, there are, that's where the access parking is. The front building, or the one in the southwest corner, has, those have attached garages. So some of the units have attached garages, not all the units. I think the westernmost one does have attached garage, although other five do. And then there are additional parking spaces out in front of those areas. In the middle, there's a common parking area. The building to the rear does not have, does not have attached garages, so the middle parking area fulfills the parking requirements for all the uses on the site. There are also four parking spaces that DOT asked us to strike out in front of Beach Appliance. Those are there, and those are striped, and you can see there's kind of a buffer between the end of the parking and the actual edge of the road. That's been an existing condition, and it's a state highway, so it's just all DOT requirements for the intersections, including that parking area. The only thing they asked us to do in that area was just to strike the asphalt to delineate the four parking spots in that area. So combinations of all of that equates to all the parking that's required for the development. We do have street trees, and as I had mentioned, this is 8-30G, but we tried to maintain consistency with the requirements of the regulations where feasible. So we do have six street trees along that frontage. We do have the two well houses. I'm getting into a little bit more detail, because April is some time ago, and I just wanted to kind of bring everybody up to speed. There are two additional parking spots on the north side of the main access drive there, and there was a request at our last meeting in April, I guess, to shift those outside of the setback, so those have been shifted outside of the setback with a little walkway and mailboxes in that particular, in that area. Some changes that we had to make since then. The Health District asked us, they were happy with everything. They asked us to go out and do some supplemental soil testing. There were no surprises with that soil testing. We went down over 12 feet, and it's all sand and gravel with no ledge, no bedrock, no water table, no sand, sand and gravel all the way down, very well draining soils, as our earlier soil testing showed, that they wanted that additional information. So with that additional information, they have reviewed and approved the plans. In total, they've talked to the state about the wells, they've talked to the state about the septic systems, and we have a full approval from Kinnick River Area Health District. Secondly, last time we talked about landscaping, lighting, and so forth. One thing that changed with the landscaping is there was a request from one of the neighbors that we change out the fence along that entire southern property line, change out the arboretum, sorry, to a solid fence, which has been completed. So that is now part of the plan. So along that line, the one that extends to the east, and then the continuation of that line to the west, all has fenced now for the privacy barrier per that request. There was also another request of the dumpster enclosure. It was approximately where the cursor is now, and that moved up to the north end of the property, up into that location away from that particular property. We did do turning radii and everything for the trash trucks, and then that's a good segue into fire. So Joe Verstig, our code and fire expert, is with us tonight for any further color on this particular subject. These buildings are townhomes. There's a two-hour fire rate or wall in between each unit, so they get treated as attached single-family units. So the fire marshal in town and the fire code generally do not apply to this project. However, in the spirit of making this a safe project, safety is one of the concerns with 8-30G, even though we don't have to comply to those regulations, we did meet with the fire, the fire chief and the fire marshal, some others on Saturday, maybe a week ago, last Saturday, and we've incorporated their requests into this review. Just today, we got an email from them, maybe flip to that second page. Just today, we got an email from the fire department saying that the revised plans conform to everything that we discussed at that meeting with them. What that included is adding a 30,000 gallon underground fire tank. You wouldn't believe the size of this tank, but it's 30,000 gallons larger than most swimming pools by multiple of two or one and a half. That's gonna blow up, and I'll show you where that is. And then there was a fire access lane that we also added, and I'll show it in time. Want the grading plan, or do you want that fire access plan? Just leave it here for now, just explain to, so where it's gonna bring the cursor, that's where we, we talked about a couple of locations with the fire department for the underground fire tank. So right now, we have it underneath that northbound lane, or the north lane of the access driveway right there. You can see the length of the tank, it's about 10 feet in diameter, and it's all that length, 50 some odd feet long. So it's right there. The piping does not have to come straight up. The piping could go off to the side and be in the grass. It does not have to come straight up. The other location we talked about was in front of the building, but if it was in front of the building, then it forces the fire truck to be off the edge of the main road. We preferred them to be within the development. And again, the fire department reviewed, sent an email today saying this meant what we talked about at our meeting. We didn't want to get too close to that existing house for obvious reasons. There is a crawl space underneath the eastern section of that house, and then there's a whole basement on the western portion of the house. You do a 10-foot deep tank requires at least a 12-foot deep excavation. So if you do that too close to the house, what's the house going to do? It's gonna fall into the hole. So we wanted it to be at least one to one away from that, so we didn't have any vertical collapse of the existing structure, which makes obvious sense, right? So we chose that location. It obviously can't be where the septic system is, it can't be where the stormwater system is, it has to be accessible. So in talking with the fire chief, we came up with that location as one of the two alternates, and that's the one we put on the plans, and he seems comfortable with that location. The other thing that we added per our discussion with them was where the cursor is soon to be, right over in that area. There was a sidewalk leading from the parking area to the fronts of those condominium units at that location. We widened that out and made that H20 traffic loading so that the fire trucks that actually drive on that, it's a, it's a paper walkway, but it's a commercial paper, so people don't have a road right directly in front of their front porch. It's a paper walkway, which, when it's not being in use, which is most of the time, you know, when the fire truck's sitting on it, it's somewhere where, you know, the people can use to access their units. There's no parking or anything there, and there are signs saying no parking, no blocking, you know, fire lane, and so forth. All of that is part of the detail, but that's made so the, the fire truck essentially comes straight in to the site, little tiny dogleg, but almost straight in, and they can pull up right to that second-to-last unit there. And if you go to the fire access point on that, shows you a little bit more detail, there's a preferred maximum hose pull from the truck of 150 feet. So on this next plan that's coming up, we actually show the hose layouts. And you can see that there's no more than 150 feet pull from the main, the main plants. PDF is not like it today, no. All right, so we just blow this up. So this was a plan that we added, fire access plan. So we show all the turning movements, pulling in, backing out. The other thing that that extension of that lane does is now we have a three-point T-shaped hammerhead style turnaround for the fire apparatus as well. So the fire, you can see the orange symbols there, the fire, that's the largest ladder truck that Old Sabre has, can pull all the way up into there, and then it could back up to buy the dumpsters, and then it could pull straight out through the grid. And then the blue lines going around the perimeters of the building, those are the hose runs from wherever the tank position is. You can see that it's, it's less than 150 feet total to where they meet. So someone leaves a truck at one location, and another one leaves a truck in another location, and they walk around wherever they need, has to be 150 feet or less, if I understand it. So as far as fire access, I think that resolves all those issues. We were just handed right before the meeting, we were handed an email from Jeff Jacobson today, which was our first time seeing it, and this was just minutes before the meeting. So it talks about, a lot about details for the tank specification and embollards and so forth, which could easily be incorporated if, first of all, the tank, like I said earlier, and Joe is here and could corroborate it, but it's, it's not even the tank that's not required, or to turn around a fire truck is not required for this project. But we're doing it just to have a safe project, and have the fire department on board to make sure they're comfortable with this project. So we've added these items, which are rather expensive, but they've been to make sure that this is a safe project. So the email from Jeff Jacobson, A, just talks a little bit about the location of the tank, talks about the specifications of the tank and the exact connection, fire department connection, and that can easily be done. We've already done the big parts, added these things. All of these details are very minor in nature and could be easily incorporated into, into the overall plan. There's nothing here that's an obstacle to anything. Jeff Jacobson's latest letter only had two remaining comments, and they were, comply with the Health Department, which we already had their approval, and comply with whatever fire asks for. And we had a meeting with them, and we complied with what they asked for. So in my eyes, other than the very fine details of the tank specification, which is more plumbing and mechanical electrical type stuff rather than zoning type stuff, is complete. So as, as far as I know, there are no outstanding comments from any side department other than those tank keepers.
If I could just follow up a little bit on the, Jeff Jacobson's comments today. And Joe Verstig's gonna talk in a minute, and he's gonna talk to you about how these are single fam, from a fire code perspective, these are single-family houses. So if Mr. Olivera built a house on this property with 20% coverage and was a 30,000 square foot house, he wouldn't have to do anything from a fire code perspective. And we're in 830G, and we understand the law basically says, you know, you can't apply any regulations against us unless, you know, they're for a specific public health or safety concern. So in that spirit, we've worked with the fire department to address their concerns about making sure that there's water on the property, 30,000 square foot tank, or 30,000 gallon, thank you, tank, and that there's ability for all the trucks to maneuver around the site. Those are their, their two concerns, and as we said, they've been addressed. What the regulations for public improvement, Section 150, deal with is not multifamily developments. Right in the first sentence of Section 150, any new subdivision. So these regulations don't even apply to this type of development. They only apply to subdivisions and subdivision roads, which become public improvements. So we spent a lot of time talking to the fire folks about this, and still agree, look at, 30,000 gallons is what you need to fight a fire for a development with 12 units. We can do that. But meeting every one of these specifications, we don't believe is necessary, because we've met the overall burden of making sure that fire can be addressed. But it makes sense to just take a look at what he's stating in his letter so that there's no ambiguity as to what we're talking about. So let's all just, let's all go through it and read it, so if there's any questions, when Joe comes up, he can address them, or we can address them. He previously commented that Section 150 Old Sabre Regulations for Public Improvements titled Water Supply for Fire Protection specifies requirements for water supply tanks. The section was specifically drafted to provide a source of water for firefighting purposes in rural towns where no public water supply system is available. Again, this is for, the first sentence is clear, any new subdivision. But, you know, the intention is, let's make sure there's water on properties for the fire department use. Minimum volume of 30,000 gallons with tank space at 2,000-foot intervals. How long are roads was based upon single-family residential lots located in the northern section of town, general lack of public water supply, and little of any other type of development. Whether this volume would be sufficient for a multifamily building would need to be addressed by the fire marshal and the fire chief, which they've got. Section 150 was reviewed by the Old Sabre Fire Department and Public Works Department at the time these regulations were drafted. Rather than reiterate the various requirements where the proposed tank does not conform, I have attached a copy with highlights to the text. Of particular note is the requirement that a fire truck pull-up with a tank located on the outside of the pull-up. This arrangement was designed to allow the fire truck drawing water to be outside the travelway so that other emergency vehicles can pass. The current arrangement has a tank located within the travel lane of the driving with water drawn from the center of the tank, which as seen in the turning movement analysis for the fire plan, which we have here on the screen. And this would not allow for any other fire trucks to access the site. Furthermore, the detail shown on the drawing shows a concrete pad on top of the tank with a vertical suction pump located at the center of the tank, which was, would result in this pump being located within the access drive, which cannot occur. So that, as Joe said, and again, we spent a lot of time talking to the fire department about the location of this, the tank, that the access to this tank will not be above the tank. It will not be in the access way. It'll be on the, the grass area to the north. So, you know, we would agree to a condition that basically said access, water access to the fired storage tank needs to be in a location approved by the Old Sabre Fire Department. It's, it's not gonna be in the middle of the road. That, that doesn't make sense. And so then, once the access we know is, is on the grass area, then a fire truck can pull up in one lane, and it's a 24-foot wide access. It actually gets wider with, with the driveways. Other emergency vehicles can continue to go onto the property. So it, you know, we believe that those comments have been addressed. Whether or not the remainder of the highlighted sections apply or should apply, again, our, our point is, they don't apply. This regulation does not apply to this. The only standard is that the fire department believe that there's enough water on the property so that they can safely address any, any issue, and the answer to that question is, it is. So that's just a bit of an overview.
And if I might add, we discussed that specific location with them at our meeting, and they were fine, and they reviewed this plan and emailed us today and said, all that meets exactly what we talked about on that Saturday meeting, so. Other than some, some of the devil in the details here, it's the, the location of the tank is the big thing. You need to put the connection really anywhere. It's just plumbing and piping. So as I said, that could be a simple condition. The tank is there, the lane is there, the fire department's happy to work out the details in the MEB build implement phase.
I'd like, I'm gonna submit for the record a letter from Joe Verstig, and it's got his, it has its CV on it as well, but just ask him just to fill in blanks where we missed and, you know, provide the commission with a little bit of your expertise.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Verstig. I've been retained as an independent building and fire safety code consultant by the applicant. You have my resume before you. Simply put, I have over 40 years in, in building and fire safety code enforcement code development. I was the chief of technical services for the state of Connecticut State Fire Marshals, and for the last 28 years, I've been an independent consultant. You can see that. And for the last twenty eight years, I've been an independent consultant, you can see the committees. From the National Fire Protection Association and have been, continue to be a principal voting member on and many of them former chair. In the memo provided you date of day twelfth. As Joe Ren said, I've actually given you code sections. From the um. Fire safety code that specifically states. That. The requirements. Due in the fire safety code, I mean, fire department vehicle access, vehicle placement, access into the site maneuverability of a fire truck within. With the road. The supporting elements of the roads to support the fire trucks. Everything related to firefighting that's contained within the fire safety code. Does not apply to one and two family dwellings and 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 what we call town homes. One and two family dwellings are detached buildings, the ranch, the cave, the duplex. And townhouses. Are are attached. Uh, single family homes. So that's why they're outside the scope of the fire safety code. Which deals with multifamily dwellings like apartment buildings, hotels and so forth. These are considered single family homes. And the international residential code sets up the requirements for these buildings in such a way. That they are equally safe as a detached ranch, cape colonial, et cetera. They're required to have. Um, exposed sides of these two, and you see that here, the front and back of each unit is exposed. Uh, the end units have a third exposed side. And the concern is always, you know. The attachment of one of these homes to the other. And the residential code takes care of that by saying you need a two hour wall between. So it's not uncommon to have a fire in one of these. And the next day you see three units on one side of a hole in the ground and three units on the other side of a hole in the ground. And and no fire spread, no damage, no smoke, no soot. In the units on either side and people are continuing to live on it, it's still different than if the colonial on the adjacent lot next to you burned down. So that's why there's no requirements for these, they're treated as single family homes. To reinforce um. What council said about the application of of your ordinance. It applies to subdivisions, which this is not. And it applies to where you have more than four dwelling units. These are not dwelling units, dwelling units occur within an apartment building. So if you build a thirty six unit dwelling unit apartment building, it's under the building code and rules would apply. These are single family homes. But the contention is that. What's in the water standard doesn't apply. Now, having said that. Because it's an H thirty G and as you were told. The requirements in part three of the fire safety code that would apply. To a multifamily apartment building or any commercial establishment have been applied to this project and that's what you see here. So even though it's not required. By the residential code, the requirements within the building code and the fire safety code as an added step towards providing safety. Have been incorporated into this project. Do you have any questions? Any questions?
What's a typical? Water pumping rate. Of a fire apparatus. To extinguish a structure fire where there's a dwelling. In other words. How long will thirty thousand gallons last?
The best technical answer is it depends. It depends. Depends on the size of the fire truck pump. Um, and let's keep it at a thousand gallons a minute. Usually they're seven fifteen thousand fifteen hundred. But really, although you can pump a thousand gallons in, what governs it is the output. So whether you use. Two hose lines, three hose lines, one hose line, use a straight stream, straight bore, use a fog nozzle. You're limited to three uh two hundred fifty gallons on a on a fog nozzle, on a two and a half.
Four hundred and fifty gallons.
Two hundred and fifty. On a single two and a half inch hose line.
For how over what span of time, two hundred and fifty gallons?
Well, two hundred and fifty, you take thirty thousand gallons and divide it by two fifty. And again, it depends on the type of fire you get.
So that the. Thousand gallons divided by two hundred and fifty is four. So if you got thirty thousand, it's a hundred and twenty.
About two hours.
The constant water.
The constant water on the fire. And again, it depends on what kind of fire you did when you when you arrived, was it a stove fire?
Well, we're we're coming from an experience in honor calls of a single family dwelling. That burned to the ground because that area did not have adequate. Fire suppression, water supply.
And we discussed that with the fire chief. That in a lot of times, you know, you get there. Um, and you have to make a decision. Do I commit resources and water to fight a fire that? For another ten hours or if I just stood back and let it go, it's over in twenty minutes. If there's no one in the building, what are you doing? And that's why there's a high firefighter injury rate that the rest of the world looks at the United States and goes. So you get injured fighting a fire in the building with no people? Why? The structure fire. Contents. It's different if there's people inside, sure. But again, with smoke alarms, carbon dioxide detection, people are awake, they're alert and out they go. Are you going to run into a rarity? Sure.
Elsewhere in the application materials, there's something about the. C R A Connecticut area health district um mentioning of a. A well. And a flow rate for that well of ten gallons per minute. At ten gallons per minute that. In order to replenish thirty thousand gallons, that's uh three thousand minutes, that's uh five. What's that, fifty hours?
The well is not connected to the fire tank. It would get filled by an outside source.
Joe, you need to speak up.
The the well is not intended, that's just for portable water, it's not intended to fill the fire tank. The fire tank is has thirty, it's a vessel.
All you got for fighting fires is thirty K gallons, it doesn't matter what the well is at all, that's not for fighting fire.
That's what the code requires, that doesn't apply to this project, yes.
Roll the dice.
Plus the the pump trucks have water on them too, I don't know how many gallons, few thousand gallons.
Each one's going to arrive with a thousand gallons, most likely. Depending on the size of the tank. And then the support for mutual aid with tankers to support. At trucks.
If a fire apparatus is actively engaged in trying to suppress a structure fire, what's the typical difficult distance from the foundation to the truck? They don't pull right up to the building, do they?
No, that's why you see the the road in red on the uppermost building, upper right. You see the road stopping short of the end unit.
So if the end unit were.
That's in the truck, wouldn't go. It would stop short of that. And and there was also a discussion.
How about how about from the side of the truck to the building, that's closer than. Twenty feet.
Right, right. Th- there's no requirement for distance away. You hear the concept and the fire chief may have mentioned it um or may have not, he mentions to us and and. And I explained it away. Uh, there's a concept called the collapse zone. That's one and a half times the size of the building and the thought is as it falls down, it spreads out. Wood frame buildings don't do that, that's the old mill buildings that are brick. With the with the heavy timber supports where you get a fire and you lose the rigidity and structural integrity of the exterior walls. And now the brick either shears downward, falls inward or falls outward. The argument was in an environment like this, even if we're prone to structural collapse. Why would you pull up in front of the building that's on fire? You stop short of it, right? I mean, if it was if it was the end one on the upper left, on the upper right building and it was the far left on the end. Why would you pull anywhere near it?
On the on the copy of the site plan that I have. Received most recently, um, there's a black dot in that. Paved area, it's a pervious paper, it says proposed five foot wide pervious walk. It doesn't. It's in the area that's wider than five feet, why does it still say it's five feet? Where the truck is, where the truck is depicted as being located. The shown on the plan, uh pervious paved walk is wider than five feet and yet the word still says a proposed five foot wide. Pervious walk.
But that's the case, then that just needs to be updated.
So that should, so that should be changed to whatever the width of that.
There are dimensions on that, could you zoom in a little bit?
These six units in the back or in north. Uh, do not have garages, is that correct?
And so. Back units don't have garage, the front units do. Will we make that full screen again?
See that black dot? There were six units there, just the the blue one that on the right side of the six.
So what used to be through there to five foot.
Always five foot.
Yeah, what used to be there was a five foot wide walkway through.
So it didn't catch up to what you're now proposing, so that should be updated to the actual width of what is now proposed.
The end of that is eighteen feet wide.
But the black dot is not there, the black dots in the middle of the wide part. I'm just making sure the wide part really is wide that it's not just five feet.
It's it's as it shows, you could see the dimension over there on the left hand side, twenty four and a half feet.
Maybe you should move the black dot or change the number from five to whatever it is.
Yes, if it's graphically shown to scale that.
If people in these six units on to the north have no garages, where do they keep their stuff? Bicycles and other equipment type things that otherwise might go in a garage.
They all have basements and then they all have patios behind with outdoor space and privacy screen.
And if those objects are not stored where you suggest, then they'll be outside on the north side of the building. Or on the south side.
No, I, no, no, they'll be, that that's that's going to be common area, so the unit owners won't be able to store things on those. Portions, the there will be specific storage rules where items can be stored. On the back side, Bob, there's their privacy screens, their patios and then their little yard areas. Even those are not common areas, right, they're private area. On the north side, yeah, north side. So they had a bicycle or two, they can store it in that location. Or put it in the basement, bring it up the stairs. And what are the size of the fences on that, those? Dimension, the callouts up above the top, the screens at the top.
I'm I'm speaking from the experience of Sabre, what is now called Sabre Station. And how they provide storage areas, sheds and or garages. For the residents to keep their stuff and these six units here have no such outside. Storage capacity.
The units over there, I believe, don't have basements, correct? No, they're they're. Yeah, they're apartment style up above, so they they don't have basements over there, these have full basements, so. Their full basement's a lot bigger than the shed.
When you said earlier that. Homeowner's association type assessments or improvements or expenses to. Address issues that must be addressed especially for public health and safety would be assessed to the common ownership. And the common ownership includes the affordable units, and the question then goes to a consulting attorney Matt Willis. Is if a homeowner's assessment. Gets laid on top of. An affordable housing unit with rent or or ownership. That's cost is set. By income. And the income doesn't change because the property needs to make improvements. And so how is it that an affordable unit could be assessed a fee for an. A a maintenance and or upkeep or upgrade or installation or something. Or which they're affordable rent, it's not going to cover that.
Right, I mean, that is a drop dead kind of affordability issue for any crisis that is large and expensive. And presumably. It's going to be have to be handled in the. Um, condominium documents because otherwise the rent's going to be going down, down and down and down because that'll be an expense in the chart. So I don't know what you had planned for that attorney to sell up, but.
Yeah, I can I can answer that, the um. The tenant would not pay the common fees. The owner would pay the common fees. The tenant would pay the rent, that's the maximum rent allowed under the affordability.
I didn't see that in any of the documents received.
Well, it no, it's in the affordability plan, that's the maximum rent that they can, they can.
Well, you're you're including the assessments as part of the rent. I know, that's what I didn't see. I didn't see in the affordability plan that the rent includes any subsequent assessments for the property owner.
Yeah, I, it it does, it it, I I don't think there's another way to do it. The the owner of the unit pays the the assessments and the common fees and then charges a rent, which is the maximum required by law.
Are these all going to be leased that are affordable?
No, there's some that could be for sale. And as you know, the the sale calculation does include. Um, a provision that the common fee. Get uh factored into the ultimate sales price, so that is in the affordability plan. That there's a, there's a, there's a common fee that does get applied.
Well, what happens after they own it? I think that's what Bob's question is.
What happens after they own it for any? For anything, you know, it this this happens in every condominium. Where.
But if.
Windows needs to be done. You know, it gets it gets spread over twelve units. Any, any.
Or they can be owned units or leased?
They could be either.
Okay, you had guys haven't made a decision on that.
No. They're all going to be condo. But they can either be sold or rented. Just like. You know, there's a lot of eight thirty G's that are condominium and if something happens. They're subject to the the common fees going up or down. And that would get, that would get baked into the uh to the price. And that's all that matters, when you buy a unit, you buy it at the, it's the cost of the unit at that time.
In the affordability plan on the first page under number one. Unit is designated for affordable housing and purchaser and tenant eligibility. The first words of the first paragraph there are at least thirty percent. Why is that wording different from the statute which says? Not less than thirty percent. You use not less than thirty percent at least twice elsewhere in this document, why is that one different?
I don't have an answer for that.
So that's presumed to mean the same thing as the eight there's thirty G statute where it is not less than thirty percent.
Yeah.
The thirteen residential units. And then it's splitting up the sixty and eighty percent. Uh, incoming. Qualification levels. And then it says. Two units will be, it it's two units will be rented or sold and two units will be rented or sold. And then it says the other nine units will be market units. Why doesn't it say those can be rented or sold? Are they different somehow?
No, they're rented or sold at market.
On page three. Uh, below the. Table of square footage in the paragraph below, just below that. Second sentence, in the event the developer or his heirs or assigns. Desires to reallocate the affordable unit, they shall make application to the town of Old Tiber in a form acceptable to the town. Is that okay if that form has not yet been determined or has that form been determined?
What we've done in the past is it's a modification of the site plan. To reallocate a unit if we say we're going to have unit one, but we want to have unit two. You know, for we come in for a modification of the site plan, that's been the form that we've used in the past.
On page four then at the top. The affordability period begins. On the data of the rental or sale of the first affordable unit. So that's time zero. Next paragraph, the initial administrator shall be DeMarco Management or Designee. At time zero, who will be the initial administrator?
Uh, DeMarco Management.
Alright. And if so. If that were to change. There would be a new designee. Um, no later than five days after the the change begins, so where my question has to do with. You're telling me at time zero is DeMarco Management. Alright, at five days after time zero, if it is to be changed. Then the a new six, new or successor administrator shall be reported to the Z E O within five business days. Of the occurrence, alright, so so there's, I'm looking at a five day hold where there may not be any administration. of the current. All right, so so there's I'm looking at a five day hold where there may not be any administrator. Why is that?
Well, if somebody quits.
Yeah, we have to.
I can I've seen it happen. You got to find a new administrator. So I personally think five days is a little short.
Well, it's just notice that well, what it requires is notice to the Z E O within five days. And then you have thirty days to replace them. If not, it's considered a violation.
Yeah, I don't find that unreasonable.
All right, I know.
Could we make a provision that there isn't any turnover of units during that transition time?
Well, they they wouldn't be able to because the administrator couldn't sign off on it. That's that's the bottom line. I've seen it happen for months, so.
Zoning doesn't do subdivisions. That's the plan of commission. So forgive me if I'm asking the question that's obvious to planners and not to zoners. But on schedule A on page nine, the property description of eight forty-six Middlesex Turnpike lists pieces. How is that? There's first piece, second piece, and third piece. And it's combining those three pieces into eight forty-six Middlesex Turnpike. How is that different from a subdivision or re-subdivision?
How is that different? That's probably the description that's on the deed of the current owner, and that's why it was used. I mean, it's not a subdivision. It's just how it was assembled probably many years ago. I mean, unless Ed has specific knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, that's that's exactly what it is. It's been assembled over time and passed down. And I don't believe you can, we can merge properties together. We can't divide them without going through.
Subdivision requires division.
The reality is it's site to the site two for the descrip.
Yes. The survey, yeah.
Chris, did you have a question?
We're onto another topic. Chair will come back up.
And near the end of the affordability plan and section, our schedule E, the proposed zoning regulations, which are those which you propose in text to alert or recognize that what is proposed does not comply with the previously approved zoning regulations. Is that correct?
Yes.
Let's look at um there will be seven A. Maximum number of dwelling units is thirteen units. You got twelve new proposed structures with one dwell dwelling dwelling units numbering twelve. And you got the existing three bedroom house or total of thirteen. All right, and you hear say that there's a maximum number of dwelling unit. So the previously existing single family house has as of right uh the ability to create an accessory dwelling unit. So you're foregoing that as of right accessory dwelling unit in that single family house. Is that correct? Because you can't have, you can only have thirteen. All right, just recognizing what the result is.
So, yes.
On the page twenty-two at the top, item D, minimum floor area for dwelling unit equals one thousand four hundred square feet. I believe that's unlawful. Because the statutes now say that you regulations cannot specify a minimum square footage for a dwelling unit. We had a minimum square footage for a dwelling unit at some time in the past that we removed it when the statute made clear that that was not allowed.
Yeah, we can revise that.
The other numerical question I have has to do with your zoning data table. In the lower right corner of the zoning data table are the numbers for parking.
First sheet.
Sheet one, sheet one.
It's a it's a it's right after the cover page. In the lower right corner of that big box in the upper left of the page, it says thirty-five spaces total. Four spaces for the existing house unmarked. Four spaces for the existing repair shop marked. However, realizing that may be previously existing noncompliant, this is an excellent opportunity to make that fourth space compliant. Because there's nothing having to do with an affordability application that would prevent that northernmost space of the four to be nine by twenty.
Nine by twenty? Nine by eighteen.
Then next is thirteen spaces for the proposed building. And you have garages and parking spaces uh delineated on the plans uh for the southern one, two, three, six units. And the and the two at north of the drive, so that adds up to thirteen. And then you've got twelve spaces for the other six units. All right, so that missed I missed one, but I I see you got six. And one of the one of one of the twelve is for a handicapped unit. And based on another comment elsewhere, is that is that I'm calling it handicap unit. It's called adaptable here. That was guaranteed to be rented to someone who needs it as ADA compliant? No, it's not. But the parking space requires a handicap sticker. And so you don't have a hand, you don't have a parking space for the occupant to have a vehicle if the occupant is not handicapped.
Okay, understood.
That's all right, what another issue has to do with the uh access drive to the four parking spaces affiliated with the single family house. Those four parking spaces may not have to re um be compliant with the zoning regulations regarding parking spaces. However, for a public health and safety standpoint, the access drive will be two-way. Cars go in, cars go out on the same access drive between the house and that island. And the width of the island as shown is twelve feet. In our zoning regulations, sixty-two point two point five point F, for public health and safety reasons, we define a two-way access drive as having a minimum width of twenty-four feet, which coincidentally is twenty-four feet on all the other two-way access drives you show here. Why is it that that access drive doesn't meet the same standards that you've applied elsewhere?
I'm not sure if I'm following the intention. Where is there a twelve foot island? I don't leave. You said there was a twelve foot island. I don't know.
I think you meant.
Move your cursor, move your cursor vertical, stop, go down, right, right there, twelve, twelve feet.
The road, not the.
That's that doesn't even meet the minimum width for a one-way access drive in our regulations, which would be fourteen feet.
Actually, your single family house is twelve feet.
It's part of the development altogether. The whole it's not this is this part and we only use these over here and we use those over there. You got twenty-four foot wide for two-way access on all the other access islands, but not this one.
But it's that specifically meant to serve a single family house, which here that's all that the different regulations in ordinance is because I'm not sure that's even a zoning regulation. It's probably a driveway ordinance. That's all that's required. So applying a different standard for to access parking spaces on a single family house, we do not believe is legal.
Well, then let me recommend that you add that to the list in your zoning regulations in our section, schedule E, that um access drive to the single family houses need only be twelve feet wide.
Twelve feet wide. We have five more parking spaces than what's required. So if you wanted to connect that to the twenty-four foot access way, I think we can do that. Um but you're going to lose parking spaces, so you can make that decision. We can add the provision. I just have to review the. Is that a zoning regulation, a private residential driveway or is that a ordinance?
Regulation for public improvements.
With regards to the yellow shaded area on the northern northeastern corner of the property, I believe I asked that once before. It has it's a it's a a proper proposed common recreation area. And at that time, the surface of that proposed area is I was told is grass. Is that just just the yellow area or does that include the area down to the catch basin?
Yeah, I think it's all grass. It's all grass. The the yellow portion was intended to be in the side yard and not in the front yard of the unit. So the recreation area was limited to the yellow shaded portion.
Right, and that proposed um how common recreation area is um accessible and usable by all because it's common area for all thirteen residents. Not restricted to just the northern ones or it's correct or or the market ones or something like that. It's open to all.
Open to all.
On the eastern side of the the southern six units, it says the existing landscape areas to be removed. Why is it necessary to remove the existing landscape view?
Yes, I think I actually think Tony Olivera, so you could probably speak to that, but I think that's already gone. There's not the scrub was and the trees and the brush in that corner.
Where he keeps his dogs, is that?
Pass where it jogs around, yeah, in that area.
There's the tree there.
So most of that, half of that is needed just for the construction of the dwelling and to excavate and create a full basement. So the majority of that would be gone anyways. We could try to keep what is remaining, but there are a couple of trees on the property line there that that would stay shaded in yellow there. Um but it's mostly like a rotter. It's not like a pristine landscape.
So is the landscape that exists there to be removed for any purpose or just because it can be removed?
It's to be removed because be able to access the constructed buildings. Pretty tight. And put the fence in, and I think it even encroaches over the property line a little bit to the south there.
Yeah, we have twenty feet from the building to the property lines in that area, and you need at least fifteen for construction vehicles and for the full excavation of the basement and so forth. So the majority of it's going to be removed anyways, just as a consequence of construction. They have a nine or ten foot hole in the ground there. You're not digging vertical. It's gonna come out at least ten feet.
At right at the corner there, it says eighteen inch cedars to be removed. And then there's a fifteen inch cedar under that, that fifteen inch cedar to be retained.
The yellow ones are noted to be main paying us.
We had a whole.
Yellow, yes, that's.
They're both known. There's a maple on the eastern side and then on the southern side, then the fifteen inch cedar. It's the eighteen inch cedar to the north, right? Right at the corner of unit six that has to be removed.
It's too, they just look green eyes.
All right.
Green up there, too.
Like green.
What's the colorblind?
Like green or yellow, whatever, the colored ones or the non-colored one.
The on the northern edge of the property, on the northeast side, there's a retaining wall. Yeah, deeper to grade. I don't have elevations on this drawing, but which is the higher side of the wall, the on on site or to the north offsite?
Higher side is our side. It was intended to have a flat area for the lawns back there rather than a sloping area. And the storm underground storm wire is in that area too, so provides cover for the underground storm wire and it provides a level area for the lawns.
Are there details on it? It says to be designed by others.
It's probably going to be a landscape block wall. That's just standard construction. It's not very tall. It's only two feet tall. Very minor detail.
Well, I mean, the retaining one, you're going to support the backyards. I don't know if it's necessarily a minor detail. What's the elevation change?
So it goes from forty-six to maybe forty-nine and a half, so max height's about three and a half feet tall, so. Building code comes in a more four feet tall.
Yeah.
Building code doesn't even apply, or if it's four feet.
Tell without a.
That's why we have the grades. We have forty-six existing grade. We have fifty proposed grade, so.
But typically, there's a detail so that it's clear.
Structural engineering.
Doesn't really say designed by others, who's designing, so it's hard for us to tell if it's a landscaper or you're.
That's because it's a building condition, not a zone.
That's interesting. In the past, you provided that.
No, we've never provided a detail for retaining. We're not structural. Typically, it's not on site. If it is, it's proprietary wall and we can give you a detail of the landscape block walls, the same as we've seen in the past. We can remove it and have a sloped backyard. We thought we were doing good.
Not saying I'm doing better, asking your question regarding details.
So about forty-nine point five or so at the highest that you can see on this grading plan, and it's elevation about forty-six or so. What I see from the foundation, max height of four feet tall. Uh, did you have more?
I don't have any more questions at this moment. There is a mention on an email from Gregory Mathis on his approval at the bottom that they strongly recommend drilling the well before any construction begins. Has that been taken into consideration and and what is the intent there?
We have a well on site that was dug in the last ten years. It's a newer well and it has twenty gallon permit yield and has good water. It doesn't even need to be treated. And it's literally within twenty feet or twenty-five feet of those two wells. We were not expecting any issues with the drilled wells.
Would the applicant agree to it as a condition?
I mean, any construction, they never had that as a condition.
I'm asking the question. I'm not asking what you would. Oh, when CRAD, when CRAD presents a recommendation, we have to, we have to ask for that and value that. And if you're not, you're opposed to it, that falls into our decision.
I mean, mine is three oh five, nine and ten years old, the twenty gallons.
So the answer to your question is no?
I want to invest twenty thousand of. I I think if I can, is I don't, I'm not sure I have the email. I just heard the.
I have it here at the bottom.
I think is the question to to drill and get the wells set before the other construction. Is that what he's saying?
Yes.
Yes. Remember, drilling the wells before any construction begins. Sufficient high quality water supply for the buildings, which we already have on site. Um also determine any water treatment associated with disposal is necessary.
So the question is, are you willing to just drill the wells and have them set before the construction begins?
I've had a lot of ones that have never done that first.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know what the hell.
I I think the concern is that if it's because the buildings are constructed and there's no water.
You know, so so when you build a twenty thousand square foot house, there's no water. What do you do then?
So let's just back in.
Then you pipe down the road and get public water, I guess.
Let's just back into the calculations quickly. So we have two bedroom units. We have twelve twelve units. So each unit uh seventy-five gallons per day per person is the normal department public health uh use. So that's a hundred fifty gallons of a bedroom. Uh, three hundred gallons per unit. We have twelve units. That's thirty-six hundred gallons a day. And the current well has a production of twelve twenty gallons per minute from the well completion reported. We are, in order to get the seventy-five foot well radius, we have to be limited to ten gallons per minute per well. So we have a total supply. If we have to throttle that down, we have a total supply of twenty gallons per minute. So that's almost thirty thousand gallons a day. We need thirty-six hundred. So even if this well was ten percent of what you eat this thing month, it still would supply the development for this daily water supply using a hundred and fifty gallons a day per unit. And you could think about your own house. It'd be hard pressed to use a hundred and fifty gallons a day with showers, laundry, dishwashing. Just not even close to what the reality is.
Why would CRAD make that request? From your experience.
I I don't know. I I don't think it made its way under the final approval. Do you have the final? This is a email. Do you have the final approval?
Yes, everyone has. That was what was with that was an earlier email when we didn't have the information, I believe, that from Brad. As we were waiting for the soil test.
Correct. So the final approval that came after that says approved for plans. So revised plans with no conditions.
Well, I guess the the question becomes the purpose of an E thirty G is to have an affordable housing development, an affordable component. Obviously, and I think there was testimony previously that running public water from Yale to the site would add to the expect. So I think the commission is asking this because they want to see the affordable housing development. But it's hard to see that it's gonna work without having the water available.
But we have a well that was drilled recently that has multiples of
But prior to construction of the building, I think.
But this this I I mean, this all it says is that you drill the well before construction begins, period. It doesn't say drill the well and test the yield. All then it goes on to say, and you have to do an analysis before the CO.
But I I think it's
I think it's I think it's more of a me. It seems like it's more of a concern about having construction activity impacting the well later on. I I'm not even sure.
Well, I think it's somewhat implied. You would need to test the well or dig the well. If you don't know, if you don't know if you don't have the information. So why would you dig it and not test it? It doesn't make any
Yeah, the goal is not to drill the well. The goal is to have the water supply provided by the well. And so after you drill the well, then you measure the flow of the gallons per minute from that well and the water quality from that well. That's the goal, not just drilling the hole.
But isn't it the builder's risk if he spends millions of dollars constructing these buildings and then tries to dig a well and can't? He can't get a CO.
But so the public water supply is just south of Route Nine, about half a mile away. This zoning commission doesn't have the authority to require a connection to that public water supply. Right. But some judge somewhere might say if your well fails and you don't have potable water for thirteen dwelling units, the judge might tell you to connect to the water supply.
Correct. But that's not a zoning issue. Neither is whether he drills the well now or whether he drills the well later. If he if he drills the well later and it doesn't work, he can't get a CO. He can't sell or lease the buildings. So I mean, I
Why would you go through all the million dollars of expenses and find out later when you can do it upfront?
Yeah.
You're gonna drill. You're gonna drill the wells anyhow.
That that doesn't matter.
You're gonna drill the wells anyhow. So I think that's the inference that Brad is suggesting there.
Yeah.
So whether you do it now or you pay me later, it's one way it's gonna come out.
Yeah. I agree with that analysis. I'm just curious why that email was before he had no, he reviewed. No, this is May thirtieth. This was on Friday. And when was this approval? After that. Right? I don't know. They're the same day. Yeah.
Because they were asking status of this because we didn't have the credit table. So I asked them that earlier in the day.
Right.
And apparently he stayed late Friday because he was waiting for comments from the public. The Department of Public Health.
Right, but there's no condition on this formal approval. Other than that email.
I guess what's the objection to the
What if he does one well? Just split it down the middle? Drill one well. If the other one's only a few feet away.
This is a public hearing. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, one of the public speak now. We've kind of hit a
Okay. Well, I think we have to work out this issue because it was a question.
Well, let's hear what the public has to say. We don't know. There's gonna be others. I think we want to keep it this moving.
I think we need to iron out this. Yeah, I think he would agree to the condition to drill the wells before construction. So.
He would?
Yes. The the idea is that the building permit going through the building process and the health process, he's never gonna get the help to sign off on a CO unless he shows he has water quality and water supply.
Why would you go? I I mean, we're delivering the point we've already stated. I'm not gonna repeat it. Right. Are you are you finished with your?
Yeah, I think you just heard from Ed that if there was a condition that had to do that, then you'll be
Yeah, another question on a historical perspective, but what is now called Sabre Station approved under incentive housing zone regulations that are in old Sabre zoning rigs was originally approved uh uh applied for as Sabre Junction under eight dash thirty G. I don't know if you go back to that far to the original application. All right. You know of the IHZ?
Yeah.
What is now called Sabre Station? The original application for Sabre Commons or Sabre Junction was for two hundred and eight units. The zoning commission modified the eight dash thirty G application and approved one hundred and sixty-eight units. That decision was appealed to what we colloquially colloquially call the housing court, at which time a judge said that one sixty-eight was not enough. Then we settled at one hundred and eighty-six, which is how many units are there today? So I look at this and I say with the all the problems with the water supply out of being adequate for thirteen dwelling units for the thirty thousand gallon firefighting tank to be installed in order to address water supply for the most part and access to the northern six units. Why not simply reduce the number of units? Ideally, it would be put one unit up there so you can circumnavigate it with whatever equipment is necessary, but also provide adequate more adequate separation distances that you're fighting with with regard to uh well and septic and drainage and um why not simply reduce the number of dwelling units?
Because it meets all the regulations. We have approval from health. We have approval from fire department.
That's health and safety.
I I think Joe just made the point. There is no issue with water capacity. The well right now could serve a development of thirty thousand gallons a day. This is going to this is going to require thirty-six hundred max. So there's no problem with water capacity. There's no problem with the setbacks. But hold on, hold on. There's there's no the thirty thousand gallon fire tank, which in our opinion is overkill more than provides enough water to put down a fire on a specific unit. It's important to remember from a firefighting perspective, our fire code perspective, these are single family houses. Yes, they're attached, but there's not one above another. It's it's not an apartment because they're townhouses, as Mr. Rusty said. They're single units. So and that the fire department recognizes that. There's a two hour separation wall in between those units. So the likelihood of spread is minimal if none, especially now that we've put thirty thousand gallons of water right there on the site. That's easy for them to get to and take care of the fire. So we disagree one hundred percent that there's any space question. Then we will not agree to reduce any units.
All right. So let's lay aside the water issue. We still have questions about fire apparatus uh ability to be supported and uh safely operating along the proposed pervious walkway area in gain in terms of gaining access to the northeastern units. So again, if it's an issue.
Can we just at mistaken speaking, which I think is part of the confusion? So zoning, the zoning commission is charged with public health and safety. This is an E thirty G with public health and safety. My understanding from the letter from the Fire Marshal on May first is that he does not have jurisdiction to comment these because it went from the International Building Co., the IDC for apartments to the IRC. The thirty thousand gallon tank has been added. But there's really been no explanation other than we're giving you thirty thousand gallons that it's sufficient for now thirteen single family homes, which are on the lot, not one. There's no calculations. There's no flows. I I think that's what's throwing the commission off a little bit. It's just here it is. It's a minimum of thirty thousand and it's not very clear as to how those calculations were mapped. The drawings and I've had some questions. You do have a thirty thousand gallon tank. I actually did call the manufacturer of the tank because on that, that doesn't even have a pump size for what's going on. Obviously, they don't go through and have the pump, but I think from a public health and safety perspective, the commission wants to know what kind of pump is going on there? Is it gonna work? Is it gonna provide what it is? But up until now, and the Fire Marshal and the Fire Chief were not available to come tonight. I think that's the issue is public health and and safety. Is that the answer? It just not it. It's getting that explanation is to, okay, it's thirty thousand gallons. It works. Okay, great. The Fire Marshal who can't comment on this is the Fire Chief who can't really comment on the code said you've added things to the plans, which is great. But I think the question is, how does the commission review this for public health and safety when there's no background information other than thirty thousand will work up until tonight when this came into into fun?
It's the commission's burden to prove that there's a public health and safety issue. It's not our burden to prove that there isn't one. And we have a letter from the Fire Chief that says when we met at the firehouse, all questions and concerns were addressed and are shown on the new drawings that I can see.
So what did you see? I I mean, this is
He he's got these plans and reviewed the size of the tank and reviewed the access to the buildings, which were his concerns. They asked for that road on the south side. They asked for the thirty thousand fire tank. We showed them the detail. We put it on the plan. He reviewed the plan and the detail. We said it was sufficient. And and I think it we have to go back to Bob's comment, which was there's still a concern about access to the rear buildings. And I know Joe Verstee wants to talk as well, but I I we don't understand what the concern is. If the second building is on fire, the fire truck is not going to pull up in front of the second building. It's going to stop close going to stop in this location and fight the fire from there. If the if the
You're talking on the south side of the northern six unit.
Correct.
What about the north side of the northern six unit?
What about them? The the fire trucks can fall here and the hoses go all the way around. It can pull on the side over here. The this is the point. This this was what the fire department asked us to provide, which is a hundred and fifty maximum of one hundred and fifty feet to get around the building for hoses. And that's that's what we've done. That's why their comment has been addressed. Your Fire Chief, your expert reviewed it and said it's what they asked for. Yeah, we spent an hour and go out. There's all these details and saying this is what we're going to do. Okay, good. And now it's on the plan. And when he saw it, he said his fire comments and questions and concerns have all been addressed. The code requires nothing. We provided everything they asked for. I don't know why it's still
But I guess we can't cite the code.
What? You don't need to cite the code.
I know, but I guess it's what that's part of the confusion is trying to say, well, you can't cite the code. The Fire Marshal shouldn't be citing the code because it's single family. But it's more than one single family. You've got multiple single family. The Fire Chief is the head of the Fire Department. But the Fire Marshal is the one who's the one in charge of the fire code. I mean, the but the Fire Marshal is the one in charge of the fire code. But now we're seeing the Fire Chief as the expert.
That's correct.
This
Because of the way they've been designed. And it applies it applies to subdivision only, but it says every two thousand feet, they need a thirty thousand gallon tank. So even if you have two hundred feet of frontage, that's ten lots on both sides of the road. So that's twenty houses for one tank, two thousand feet. We have less than twenty houses here. We have a thirty thousand gallon tank. I don't it's they asked us to add a thirty thousand gallon tank, which is the code minimum. Code doesn't apply. They asked us to do it with it.
Joe Verstee, if I may. You're a hundred percent right. Now, the Fire Marshal has absolutely no jurisdiction on one or two family homes or townhouse. He legally cannot enforce the International Residential Code, which has no requirements for fire department vehicle access. However, what we have provided here are the requirements within the Fire Safety Code, section five oh three that would apply to an apartment building, a hospital, or any other building under the jurisdiction of the Fire Marshal. Anything other than a single family home or townhouse. And those requirements are that you'd be able to get a fire truck within fifty feet of an exterior door, providing access into a building. And we've done that. And you see that in front of the the upper right building. We've also provided, because it's over a hundred and fifty feet length, that you have you can back out without providing a turnaround. So we provided the turnaround so you don't have to back all the way out to the street. Also, you can see that there's room for other fire truck placement. So in addition to reaching the front door within fifty feet of the front bumper of the fire truck, firefighters have to be able to walk around the building as if we're McDonald's from the front door all the way around, going clockwise or counterclockwise, not more than a hundred and fifty feet, or it's permitted to start at two different points. One going clockwise, one firefighter on foot going counterclockwise, reaching meeting in the back and each having not traveled more than one hundred and fifty feet. And those are satisfied by these requirements. If you scale them, uh, you will find that they're totally compliant. We've met the road width requirement. We've met the supporting requirements for for the soil so the truck doesn't sink. We've met the overhead restrictions. Everything is patterned on the largest, most demanding fire truck that's in the arsenal of the old Sabre Fire Department. So this is totally compliant. The Fire Marshal can look at this and say, that meets the fire. But if I had jurisdiction, this would meet the code. And that's what's depicted here in the drawings. The thirty thousand gallon tank was their number. If they wanted twenty, we would have twenty. If they wanted eighty, he probably would argue it, but they wanted thirty. We put thirty. We're done. Thank you.
Jeff's online if you want to discuss the third.
Jeff Jacobson? Jeff?
Yes.
Can you hear him?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, we we have you. Would you like to comment to um what you heard and to your latest information you sent us today?
Well, um, in terms of the um first part of that section one fifty, it talks about subdivision and re-subdivision, which Ed is correct. But then it said four lots or dwelling units. You know, my interpretation of that was there's more than four dwelling units here. Um, but I guess that's up to the legal consuls to interpret that.
Johnny Wilson? Well, I mean, there's two provisions. You have your ordinance. You also have your site plan where you can talk about fire matters in your site planning regulations. I think it's section fifty-one. I didn't know if Mr. Jacobson had any health and safety comments about this. The plan as proposed and as he's heard the applicants discuss it this evening.
Well, in terms of um the location of the fire tank, uh, the detail shows Uh the detail shows, you know, a vertical pump. Centered over the the tank, which would place it. In the middle of that travel lane and it also shows. Concrete pads over top of it. So, you know, that was one of my questions. Um alls I can review is what's shown on the drawings. And it shows, you know, concrete pad and a vertical shaft pump. Uh centered on the tank. Um so I think that's a a logical question to to ask.
Which what plumbing?
Can you speak up? So that you can hear me. I'm sorry if it's.
If Joe Verstee is more versed on this, you know, we're getting beyond zoning here. We're getting into mechanical electrical plumbing specifications that. Certain officials and experts have to review, but. The 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 bike doesn't have to go straight through and come out in the lane. The lane is one of the two preferred locations that the fire department. Asked us to look at and request it. So that's why it's there. The plumbing could easily with connections and and elbows and forty fives could easily be placed anywhere. Correct me if I'm wrong. It doesn't have to go vertically up through the lane. It could go ten feet off to the side and then come up vertical. And we have a location for it in the grass island right behind the curb. So it it that's just a a standard basic detail. And when the mechanical electrical plumbing engineer, which there are notes on here saying that. Gets their hands on it when it actually has to be reviewed and approved by. The building official or whomever would review that before it gets installed in the ground. Then all the plumbing details and specifications get worked out, but it doesn't have to come straight up vertical. It can go offset. Which, you know, makes perfect sense off to the side in that grass area between the curb and the existing house.
Am I still on?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. The other comment I had was if, you know, a pumper is. Right there at the tank or next to the grassed area.
Um you know, it seemed to me based on the um turning movements that you you wouldn't be able to get any other fire vehicles. Into the site.
Can you repeat, Matt Jeff? We lost you.
It is adjacent to that grassed area. To draw from the tank. Then it would block access for any other vehicles into the site. And you can see that on the fire access plan. Looked at the turning movements.
Well, so yeah, Joe Verstee is here. He's gonna answer that. I was looking at the widths and we have twenty four feet of width there.
Yeah, Joe Verstee, for the record. This is always a matter of pre-planning by the fire department command staff and understanding. Where a fire could occur, which truck should go in first? The last thing you want to do is get the truck in first, hook up to the tank underground and wait for everybody else to come in. The first truck that comes in is probably gonna be the engine. Cause you want to get your water and your pump that contains the engine that contains the thousand gallons onsite close to the truck. And putting water on the fire while the lines are lit uh laid back to the fire truck that's at the tank. Understanding that if you put the fire truck at the tank. Um and you can't get anybody in, you've kind of shut yourself in the foot. So this is a pre-plan, a tactical operation of the fire department. So just because the road is not wide enough and somebody puts the truck there, somebody's gonna tell them to move the truck. It's like the ambulance getting there first, the cops coming up behind them, you load the patient, then the ambulance can't get out. These things have to be considered before you park your car and walk away with the keys, just like with fire truck placement.
Uh also, the. The ladder truck, which is wider than the pumper truck that would be there taking water out of that tank is the. The maximum width of that, right on the detail on the sheet is nine foot, seven inches. Even if we said ten feet for that truck up against the curb, we still have fourteen feet on the other side for another one of equal size to get by. No one's going to be leaving the site when that's pumping water out of there. They're only going to be entering into the site. And if they have fourteen feet of width, they they can manage to get by. It's not blocked. And there's.
That's not what the turning movements show. If take, bring that plan up.
The. You know, we we. You all know that once there, when there's an emergency happening, if they have to shut down the road and pull in straight. And eh like Joe Verstee said, they're going to pre-plan, so there's not going to be someone blocking the access. Uh for any other trucks that need to access the site. The ones that need to get in first are gonna be there first. That's what the fire department does. They know where their their water access is and where their connection is. Um again, this was the preferred location that they asked us to add to the plans. So if there is another better location for the tank. We we will investigate that, but without undermining an existing building and without having it next to. A state highway, we felt that this was, again, the tank's not required. We're adding it because we were asked to add it. And this was the location we were asked to add it in. So we're doing the best with what we have to work with. There's fourteen feet of travel way there with no curb on the other side, but just landscaping. So. They have plenty of width to get around, even if they have to back up and straighten out. They can get by. It's not like they can't get by. There's no physical obstacle there. If they have to go out, if they have to swing into the oncoming lane, they have their emergency vehicle with lights on, they certainly can do that. They could stop traffic. These turning movements are. The turning movements that we have to show DOT entering and leaving the site, not crossing the center line. If there's an emergency, all of that. Is off the table and the emergency obviously takes precedence over anything else. Um so there's, I. Disagree, there's fourteen feet of width there that another vehicle can get by if it needs to get by. Um but they should be in there first and they should plan appropriately and then that one could leave and then all the turning movements work after that. Do you have a follow up, uh Jeff?
Well, the only thing I can I can say is, you know, that's why. Uh the details shown in section one fifty. You know, has a turnout for the uh fire truck to get out out of the travel lane with the tank on the on the outside. Um. Whether that applies to this or not, I guess is is up to interpretation.
We do have two parking spaces there that are not meant to be permanently parked in. Um they're meant to just uh for a guest or a temporary guest or um to to get the mail at that location. Um so there is some extra pavement in that area. Uh we wanted to add some landscaping between the house and there. I mean, we can. Uh widen that area out a little bit. Uh we just don't, the the tank excavation can't be very close to the house. That closest part of the house is a crawl space and if you have a twelve, fourteen foot excavation there, you're going to collapse that structure. So we try to pull it, pull it away a little bit and and suffice or or meet the requirements of the fire team.
All right, since this uh is a continuation with public hearing. Um we have people online and uh in the audience that they wish to speak. Um if you've spoken before. Uh we are, you're welcome to speak again. We would ask that you um if you have new. Uh comments or additional comments that you didn't share with the commission prior, that you please do. When you uh identify yourself by name and your address uh would be appreciated for the records. So I'll start first with the uh. Audience, is there anyone um in the audience wishing to speak? Uh in behalf or against the application? Yes.
Okay, we can mute you.
We'll mute mute you. Okay, bye.
My name is Dorothy Spada with a eight sixteen Middlesex Turnpike. I have a concern I want to bring up and then I have a a question that has our immediate safety involved. Um. One is, again, I'm gonna bring up with all of this digging and the wells and the use of water, because this. Myself and many of the neighbors have an ongoing thing about if our water tables are gonna be changing and how that's effective. I know there's. Not gonna be an answer, but I just wanna put that out. Second one is lighting. Um I know that the lighting was that was. Cold that it's bringing me for night sky. There's a light. Right now on the residence. Um that shines into our bedroom all evening. And so my concern is that you have all these fourteen foot lights. Is it going to shine into Mrs. Tuckers and our houses? Um. You know, that's a concern. Um it already is affecting us now. Um. One of the immediate concerns is that when the big trucks, the construction trucks are parked in front of the houses, our house and. The applicant's homes, it takes away our line to get out. We cannot see to get out onto the highway. To the state highways. So that's a concern. That's gonna be ongoing. I'd like to see some kind of resolution presented to us that we're safe. That the biggest concern I have, this has happened twice already. That the construction truck have entered our property using our driveway and blocked. That I was not able to leave. That is the only way that eight thirty six and I. At eight sixteen, my husband and I have egress or access to our home. Uh that is, I want some kind of assurance that this is not going to be an ongoing problem during the construction. Cause it's it's scary. We have no way. To get in or out. I was late to two different things when I had to go run around and find people to leave the trucks. So I'd like some kind of assurance from your team to that how that's not gonna happen.
Attorney, so I think i- if you would agree, we can go through the uh scenarios with uh listening to the public. And then and then you can answer those questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um is there anyone online wishing to uh? Speak on behalf or in opposition to, please raise your hand. Uh seeing anyone at the present moment, I'll turn back to the audience. Is there?
Meredith Devaney, I'm here with my grandmother who's at eight thirty six Middlesex. Um. I have a couple of questions. I did not see a stormwater runoff plan. Little concern about where the stormwater is gonna be running off. Which direction it's gonna be going. Um also, I was curious if that phase one environmental was done. Um I know that they've been doing some soil testing. I would have concerns and urge you to look at the soil underneath the shop. For years, it was an art studio, plumber studio, lots of work, lots of old chemicals, I'm sure. I'd be have concerns about that. Um and then I would just also ask, it seems that there's some errors and some omissions on these plans between some of the portability and on the the plans as you guys have. Um presented. I'd urge you not to make a vote until everything is corrected.
Thank you. Uh there's no hands raised on Zoom, so I'll turn back to the audience. Yes, sir.
Name is Louis Spade of eight sixteen Middlesex Turnpike. This guy concerned, we were talking about the retaining wall in the back. Um the tank to hold the stormwater is back there. So now if you take this, he said that he would take this, the retaining wall out. Does that mean they're lowering the tank further? Into the ground. Cause you're forty eight inches or forty six inches. Uh you know, the soil. So now the tank would probably be about three feet down. Now you gotta turn around and lower it down eight feet or seven feet. To the bottom of that, now you're starting to get deep. I mean, you know. Just that and then. I worked in septic systems, piping and all that. You have a surge of people that are gonna be using. The facilities in these houses. You got thirteen of them between six o'clock in the morning and nine o'clock. So you're gonna have all that sewage water running in at one time. On top of everything. I mean, I've never heard anything about gallons or anything else. With the septic system here, but then you got your water and everything else is right close. I also work pumping septic tanks and I've seen it where the septic system got flooded by rainwater. Because of the drain. Now you get a big storm. I know we don't want to talk about it, the hurricane or storm. That water's gonna go into the ground. It's gonna go to a holding tank. And then it's gotta be dispersed out. The water doesn't stay in the tank. It's gonna drain. And everything, you know, I mean, you've got awful lot of water in the ground. Yeah, it's sand, it's gravel and everything else. But where does that water go? I mean, you got all that sewage and the water and they're hot. Again, I said it last time. Where's it gonna go? Water's gonna flow downhill. It doesn't take a brain surgeon to figure that. You know, I mean, we keep, you know, seven days a week, you're gonna have that between six. And nine, and then again in the evening, between six and nine or whatever it is. You know, in the cities, that's how they got a plan to do the piping and everything. And that's when you get your massive surge. If you take a test in the middle of it, you're not getting anything out of it. But during the surge is when you're gonna get it. I mean, you get all that runoff from the buildings. Is it, and you know, where's it all gonna go? It's all gonna go in the ground and eventually into this. Ponds. And it may not happen tomorrow. But it may happen. You know, everybody's, nobody concerned about what what if, everybody's, oh yeah, it'll work, it'll work. And then all of a sudden, it doesn't. And these people are gonna have to pay for it to fix it. It'd be better to address the concern now before the building's built. I can understand the two wells also. You would, why don't you just drill a well? Do your water tests before you build an eyesore in a neighborhood. You put it up, you can't get water. You're not gonna pay a million dollars to have that water run up for twelve units. I mean, the 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 it just, there's a lot of things that need to be addressed before anything. With the water volume is nothing that seems to be, you know, oh, yeah, 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 but I couldn't put. An uh rebuild my house when I was zoning coming out, I gotta restructure my septic tank. And now I got a half an acre. How much have they got? An acre and a quarter for thirteen yards, actually fourteen, cause the business will be open during the day. So I mean, it doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense, but. Like I said, there's people more smarter than me, but common sense doesn't rule anyone.
The zoning commission isn't responsible for pop the the septic.
Right, no, 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 I understand that. I'm just voicing my.
I just wanted to to address that, so that clarifies that. That's what CRAD does and performs that function. So it has to meet those their requirements, their state requirements for that. All right, we we don't get a chance to interact or uh.
I'm just saying stuff so it's out there. That's all. I know you guys can do what you can.
Right.
But we already have polluted soil on one side. I mean. My well isn't that deep, so now we start draining that much more water out of the ground. He may get that amount of mo- water, but if the water level's gonna fall.
Okay. All right, we're, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Jeff.
No. Uh no one else online? Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak? Not seeing any. Um attorney, if so, did you wanna? Comment to some of the questions?
I think some of the questions were related to the soil and water in particular, which I know we didn't spend a lot of time on. Um I I I can make the statement. If okay, construction vehicles aren't going to park on somebody else's property. So they'll be parking out. Do you have a plan as to where construction vehicles will be parking during construction? Can I study? On the property, so.
So what?
You can't stop somebody pulling the wrong drive with my mistake.
No, 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 you park across.
They're pulling our driveway and they're pulling at at you taking the fence down behind the beach's property. We'll be just shop. And they're accessing your property, be that little strip. So they're coming in our driveway and then they're parking. This is, so the driveway's vertical. They're parking horizontally. Uh they're not just pulling in there. They're parking, I can take pictures when this happens.
Put a camera there, then we'll film it.
That'd be great. Just, we gotta get it done.
Look, it's happened.
Vehicle parked there.
They, it's happened twice since that I've seen.
And it crushed the construction equipment parked across the driveway.
You can speak to Downey. I don't wanna name the company, but it was Downey. I actually called Downey and I could, I couldn't find anybody. And it's scary for us that our, I know this might not sound important to anyone else, but when we don't have access or egress, it's not funny. And I'm not finding that.
If they were unloading to do the more testing holes in front of our JV, unloading to put their back.
No, they did, it was behind our JV. They accessed our driver. They drove through that little strip right there to your property and let the. Truck. In their their with trailer thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was with them.
Well, I I I think the uh.
I can put up like some kind of fact, well, they can. Put up a camera, could put up a sign saying.
Nobody likes to have their their driveway blocked. And the question here is. That with the request is that you do what is necessary and respectful. and respectful in uh watching out for abiding property owners during your construction.
One hundred percent.
All right, and in the event that that should happen because you're not in total control of every truck that pulls up there. Uh, where does the uh homeowner contact? To resolve it or get the property moved, particularly if they have to go out for some reason, whether it's uh, an appointment or, or whatever.
How, how, it could be a bad truck pulling into our JV.
But I'm saying, nah, it's a construction equipment. If they're, if their driveway is blocked. Okay, obviously you don't wanna see that happen. Right?
Put a camera in our JV.
Who should they contact?
Me?
All right, so you would have to provide any information to the abiders. Okay, that's all the request is.
Somebody sits in our JV all day long. They can go in there and that lady could get ahold of me in two seconds.
Right, so that, that's all the, the question is. Attorney, so.
Uh, stormwater? Yeah, sure, I could talk about that. I already talked about lighting too. We had a discussion about lighting last we were here, um, and we also talked about it with ARV who subsequently approved all that, but all the details around here, it all is consistent with the regulations, fourteen foot high poles, flush bases, it's all dark sky compliant. Um, I can't speak to any existing fixture, that fixture will still be there or how it's pointed or whatever, but all the proposed lighting meets the current town regulations. We provided plans and details on that, um, so all that's there, the building mounted lighting and the site lighting. The stormwater, we went through this in detail at the April meeting as well. Um, it all gets collected on site and it all is directed on the north side of the rear building. Um, to an underground infiltration system that was all reviewed and approved by Jeff Jacobson. The town uh requires us to do up to a twenty five year stormwater design. We did this up to a hundred year storm design, so all of the runoff gets collected on site and it gets directed to the underground infiltration system. Which then infiltrates it into what we talked about before. We dug holes down more than twelve feet and it's all sand and gravel, dry with no water table. Um, so that, that is where that goes and the, the retaining wall in the back, we didn't say we're going to remove it. I said if we did, we'd have a sloped backyard. We're creating level backyards for those units. It's three and a half to four feet tall, doesn't support the weight of the stormwater system, it just creates that flat yard versus a sloped one. It's, it's only real purpose. Uh, back there. Um, as far as water quality for stormwater, we do have uh sumps on the catch basins to collect the, the sands and salts from the uh the winter activities. And then we have on the last one before it goes in, we have a hood, so prevents all the worries to see in this rate, prevents all any floatables. Styrofoam cups or whatever and any oils that float on the water, keeps it in the basin so it can be cleaned out uh with maintenance program and not get up underneath and into the stormwater system itself. Um, as far as the septic, again, we said before, it was all approved by CRAD and CRAD stuck, uh, they, they sought advice from the state uh Department of Public Health. And that is all approved. Um, the wells, the septic systems, it all is approved, it was renewed and is in performance uh with the Connecticut Public Health Code.
There was mention of the phase one, did you have to get a phase one attorney, Caso?
Uh, no, phase one environmental, you'll win when you purchase it. I got chance?
No, well, I mean, fine, no, not required.
Okay, so no phase one was done?
No, phase one was done.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, I think that addresses all the questions.
I, I believe it does. And the only official comment from the commission would be um, the neighbor where the light currently is shining into their home, if you could.
Not only like that I see, I see that they point one out, I don't know if it's all addressed it. There's a sign on our JV, his light that goes off at ten or eleven.
Okay.
And he's.
If you, if you speak to, to the young lady behind you afterwards. Point it out.
Come back to the house.
You'll make that adjustment.
On the second floor, your house.
Okay.
I have.
It's a spotlight, thank you.
Yeah, and then we're gonna down our a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No other questions from the floor? And then no other questions from uh, anyone online, so. Um, commissioners, um, we're at this point in public hearing uh, as to what your recommendations are for the next step we've given. Uh, since we have a date of today. Um, and the applicant hasn't extended any um uh, extensions to us. That we have a choice to close public hearing at this point if everybody has what they need necessary.
Can I ask one more question? And I'm sorry if I, I answered this, I know it was touched on, but attorney Willis has some comments about um, the, and I know they were sort of addressed, but I'm just wondering if they were addressed in a satisfactory manner in terms of the distribution of the units and the um, I guess I'm still struggling a little bit with the the whole rental versus sale concept and the fluidity of that. Um, it, attorney Willis had a recommendation about um the equal distribution of sale units versus rental units, but I don't see that that's been totally addressed.
The issue regarding distribution has been addressed.
Okay.
The applicant has stated that they don't know yet if these are gonna be sold or rented and they can do either.
Right.
The big issue was it wasn't clear that it was all gonna be one condominium.
Right.
And now we know that it is. That is something that was not clear.
But in terms of your comment about, so if we're going to have, for example, half the units are sold and half the units are rented, then half of the affordable units should be sold and half of the affordable units should be rented. So is that?
That wasn't the intent of my comment.
Okay, where it says, uh, the applicant needs to determine what they're going to, uh, there needs to be even dispersal for rent or for sale of affordable units. If six units are rental and seven are for purchase, then two affordable units should be for sale and two for rent.
And now they're making it all a condo. So however they do it, they can rent, someone can buy and rent. And if it's, then I'm okay with that now. Now that they've explained that, I'm all right.
The, the, and if I can just add. Um, zoning, this case law on this, doesn't get involved with whether somebody rents or sells.
Sure.
So there's a, there's a line there. So I think that the concern was, and I understood it, and that's, that's, that was, I, I hope we addressed it. What what was attorney Willis wanted to make sure was that we weren't gonna stick all the rentals in one unit and if they're well failed, they wouldn't be part of a condo where it would be, the cost would be spread out among everybody.
Okay.
So I think that was
Okay.
From what I understand, based on our conversations, that was kind of the intention of his, his comment.
Okay.
Not, are we renting or are we selling? Once they're all part of one condo, then it, then it becomes a unified development. And those concerns go away.
Okay, I guess, I, and I understand that and that makes sense to me. And I guess what I'm still trying to make sure we're, we're or what I'm maybe not understanding is with sort of the fluidity of the rented versus owned units, I wanna make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to lose affordable units. I, I wanna understand how that will, so, so and I guess that will be overseen by the.
There's a couple of answers to that. Number one, they're designated on the plans. Number two, within the affordability plan, they specifically put in. Uh, let's say all of a sudden the town or the commission believes, wait a minute, these aren't affordable. There is an audit procedure. And the party agrees to be audited and the town has audited some developments here successfully. And so I had that specifically requested in the affordability plan, so that wouldn't be an issue.
So if somebody, um, sometimes it happens where someone's income increases and they like sort of price themselves out of affordability. And so then, my understanding is that then the next unit that becomes available has to then convert to an affordable unit. Is that?
That's normally how it's handled, yes.
So I just wanna make sure that would still apply here where we have, I guess I'm having, my brain is having trouble wrapping around how that would apply in a situation where.
It's gonna apply to the rentals. It probably won't apply to the owners. The owners are gonna buy, let's say in fifteen years, they're making more. It's still, when they go to sell, they have to sell to somebody who's affordable.
Sure.
That's all managed by the management company, so they would put all those details.
And the one that they, I assume they've spoken to DeMarco directly.
Yeah.
And she's willing to take it on. She is, and she's um, experienced.
Okay, and I, and my other question is for uh this cost stuff. Are you comfortable, and that's like, that's fine. Are you comfortable, or I guess, I, I just wanna make sure, I know there was discussion about the, the types of units and that there is only one unit that has a garage. Um, and sort of how we're how we're, how the affordable units are being determined or designated versus the not affordable units and that there's only one that has a garage. And there's, there's seems to be a, an unwillingness to, I guess, make an exchange of those units. And so I'm wondering if, I guess, I, I guess I'm looking I wanna make sure that that issue gets touched upon and whether we, whether you're comfortable that it's a fair, sort of a fair distribution of the events.
So this was brought up initially in the comments to attorney Casella. Um, attorney Wilson, I did go through and talk about it, I think earlier, testimony from attorney Willis. Is that they're comparable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so I, I'd like to make a motion to, um.
Yes, can we, just, I just wanna, sure, if, before you pose the public hearing, thank you. Sorry to jump on your.
I'm sure.
Um, I, I think it, I, I, we do, Mark asked the question earlier, if there was any questions for us. Um, we did, I did make a point earlier about some conditions that we would be agreeable to, so I just wanted to review those, so they're in question lines. And I know some of these are in attorney Willis's letter as well, we have no objection to those um, conditions. But any you know, any condo documents will be provided for review and approval by commission's counsel. Updated affordability plan will be provided for review and approval by the commission's counsel.
Just slow down a little bit here, we get a lot to. What was the first?
Condo docs. For review and approval. Then affordability plan for review and approval.
Make the northern parking space of four at the appliance store comple- uh, compliant with nine by twenty.
Nine by eighteen.
It, it already is, there's twenty five feet to the property line, that space.
We'll show it up, we'll show it on the plan that it's compliant.
Are you saying nine?
No, there's a, there's a gravel area to be removed. But the parking space shown has a, an angle, it's not a rectangle of nine by twenty. On the, on the breeding and utility plan and also on the site plan. So northernmost of four parking spaces is not a rectangle.
So.
Make it a rectangle.
First of all, you mean nine by eighteen, right? That's the requirement, both said, or nine by eighteen. Second of all, please.
I don't think he heard you. So Bob, the nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen, so.
And if you see the dimension there, there's twenty five feet from the, most of this part of that triangle, as you call it, to the property line, so there's there's a bigger rectangle in there than nine by eighteen is, there's a rectangle of nine by twenty five, but we'll show it more clearly. But the space is there.
Just make the northern space like the other three spaces.
Take the angle up, yes.
Exactly.
What else you have?
Um, provide a detail of the retaining wall on the northern property line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any.
Will you include the fencing too?
A detail of the fencing.
So is it just gonna be the PVC fence or so it says fence, but then the fence stops? Sorry, I'm going back to that.
That's okay. Stockade or vinyl? Which one?
The fence, there, there's no fence along the northern property line, just to clarify that.
Why? Downage or not?
Proposed a hundred and sixteen foot, linear foot, six foot height, solid vinyl or stockade fence. But then it only goes through a portion of it and it stops.
The whole southern property line should have fence.
I'm talking about the northern.
Okay, so the northern part of line, we had our abilities on there, so would you like the?
It's not.
It's not where you, what you have.
She green of eleven.
Okay.
Behind the patio units.
Yeah, so.
So it has a hundred and sixteen linear feet. And then it has
Yeah, it's on here.
Three arbor by the, and then arbor by the along the east side with no fence and then there's fence that appears proposed also on the set.
Okay, yeah, so.
Aligning the whole thing with fence.
I went over with Ross and I would gel.
Right, so the retaining walls, we did the retaining wall detail, that'll be fence, a hundred and sixteen linear feet. But you're gonna stop before you go to the easterly property line, you're not gonna put it along the easterly property line.
Yes.
The construction.
Well, right.
Yeah, absolutely, there was thought of. A putting rail, a viewing area, like a, like a split rail, but
that had the eastern background, right? Yes.
The fence stops here. Then this goes here and then there's a viewing area.
So no trespasses to the.
So there's, yeah, there's no fence continuing on the north. And there's no fence on the east.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's a little bit here to, to here.
You're gonna continue it all the way through the other boundary with vinyl fence?
Yeah, even, not vinyl, I was gonna do stockade, but
Whether it's stockade or vinyl.
Our JV was, which was a total chain link one that we took down, that's gonna be wood, some more privacy for the neighbor.
So I'm talking about the northern property line. So the northern property line.
Or the retaining wall is.
Right.
Right, yeah, that's, um, instead of the arbor by the heat plus, we'll put a fence there, so.
So there's no arbor bodies, what I'm saying, it's proposed as a fence, but it stops.
Yeah, and there's three arbor bodies.
Right.
So those, there'd be no fence there, and then along the eastern boundary will be a split rail fence. Not the stockade.
Well, it's the why not continue the stockade to the
Because it's a nice view.
Did you have? No, I'm not talking about.
The view, and I know this came up last time, I, happens to be we had gravel pit inspections. It appears that on the other property line, it's pretty heavily wooded, so I don't know how you're gonna see a view without removing the trees from the other property.
And I could, you could say.
So stockade all the way around?
Yeah.
So stockade on the eastern side and finishing up the northern side. To the east. Six foot stockade. So, is that, is that clear?
I believe so. Chris?
Twenty seven.
Yeah.
All right, more?
Yep.
Uh, drilling, uh, well before construction begins.
Okay.
And then, um, the act, the, I don't know what the technical term is, what's the access to the water tank called? Where the, where it comes out all around it, the suction thing?
Scan it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the, the dry hydrant.
The, the dry hydrant will be located on the grass area to the north of the access drive and in a location approved by the fire department.
To the north of the access drive?
Yep.
So same location, no shipping of parking or asphalt, it was trying to be clear so we can break this.
That's not convenient anywhere, I wanna wear it with the tank, guys. They even go right on the pump out that they pull in.
Don't think the tank itself. So you shift, the dry hydrant is to be relocated to the north of the access drive and on location to be approved by the fire department, but there was discussion. Department, but there was discussion of shifting the tank.
You can say the final location, they've come by the fire department, and that's what they anticipate, so it's not gonna move it, but. You can put that in. About jeopardizing the integrity of the adjacent building.
Hey, Chris?
Anything else?
Um.
Hold on, I got.
So the, um, paper walkway.
The note regarding the paper walkway be removed, no, the note regarding the five-foot paper walkway be revised. Correct with.
And the next one, well, this is the situation I'm asking now. So you talked about the location of the paper walkway E and C. Where the E and C trucks are. Uh, we have a similar situation on a nearby condominium complex. Um, will that remain free of obstruction, meaning? When the fire truck comes in. Typically, the one I have enforcement issues with, it's patio furniture. Planters. And hence other items.
That can be taken care of on the condominium documents, I would. Remember that? Yes.
Alright, so the condo.
And we have details, we have a red fire line strip with a sign too.
So condo docs be amended.
Emergency access.
No. Obstruction permanent.
There's any.
No obstructions.
Something's wrong.
Exactly, we've had situations where they had to be moved, because large planters and things like that, where it's become an issue.
Sure, it's, it can be.
Is it, some of them you can't run over. I guess, but it doesn't move the truck. Okay, the affordability documents, going back to that. Sorry, I got notes all over the place, remove the. Minimum square footage, since it's an illegal condition, so. Which is fully compliant.
Oh.
Lighting fixtures will all be full cut off.
Yes.
And dark sky compliant.
If you wanna put, including any on the single family house. Just to. But something's fine, what we said earlier.
Sure, sure, that makes sense, that's, that's good.
Will be existing. Structures. Everyone. And those everywhere, sorry. Did you do anything and we missed the job? I know Bob cut a lot, let me get it.
I need for. Attorney Casella, which one is? Bob, did we miss any?
Uh, Joanne's like, her notes.
I didn't see anything else. Oh, the handicap space, he was wondering about that extra space, the handicap space, if, if a handicap space.
Oh, great, well, there's nothing to do about it, you gotta have a handicap space, or you have a handicap.
Do they have an extra space? If they don't, that ten or that unit does not have.
Maybe it doesn't.
We have five.
It can't, it can't be enforced, put it down.
But they have a sign and they have the space, they're all set.
Yeah.
Right, but just to clarify and for the record that we have five extra spaces, that's required, and so. Even if that was signed and marked and there wasn't a handicap space, we still have enough.
I also have no accessible dwelling unit attached to the house.
No accessible.
Exist, no ADU.
Yeah. Or permitted, some part of this.
Well, there's only thirty-three parking space, surface parking spaces plus garages provided. The zoning data table in the lower right corner says. That, that there's thirty-five total, but that's wrong, if you count them up. There's only thirty-three.
Hey, so that's three of them.
What about the, uh, affordability doc, not less than the thirty-nine? I am.
What was that, so the affordability document, we remove the minimum square footage. And amend the language consistent with the statute to not less. Than thirty percent.
Correct. Not less than.
There any persons? Just don't think about it.
Yeah, I'd like them also that.
Oh, the. Applicant will provide. The town. And neighbors. With a contact information.
Good? Good, okay. Attorney Casella, did you have anything else there?
I don't think so. Okay, I think we're now all done, thank you.
Okay, so, um. Once, once we close public hearing, there's no additional information allowed from. The audience, the comments, or from, um, alternates. Um, so I'll make a motion to close public hearings. Jen, there. Thanks, son. Make a motion to close public hearing, I wish bring wind application for site plan approval. For affordable housing development, CGS eight thirty G. To construct twelve dwelling units, twenty-one thousand four hundred and forty-six square foot total. And retain existing two thousand four hundred and fifty-three square foot, single family dwelling unit. And one thousand two hundred and seventy-four square foot appliance. Repair business at eight forty-six middlesex turnpike. Assessors map sixty-three lot five restricted business pay three visit.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis, any discussion? Not hearing any, to a vote, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Ananamous five zero. Okay.
Based on the multitude of information received this evening. I would like some additional time to. Assimilate that before deliberation, and therefore I would prefer to vote on this matter at a future date.
We're out of time.
Hmm?
We're out of.
We're out of time.
We're out of time, ah, see? How did that happen? Took a long time to get all of the pertinent data, didn't it? So we have to vote tonight.
Unless we get an extension. Unless you get an extension from the.
Attorney Casella.
Attorney Casella.
Two weeks. Is that all, man? Ben? We, we really can't participate in this part of the.
Well, we are asking you that question, then. You can answer.
Weeks. Yeah.
Yeah. So the applicant agrees to a two-week. Extension to our next regularly scheduled zoning commission, um, uh, meeting on June.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Is there a, we have to do it as a motion and a second, right?
We need something in writing.
I appreciate that, we, right, we need, we need something in writing from. Attorney Casella.
Sure.
Okay, we do appreciate that. Um. So motion is made. This applicant has agreed, is there a second?
Second.
Put it in by Laura Gray, any discussion, not hearing any, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Moving on to section five, permit renewals for gravel pits. Um, Bruder.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Alright, good night. You wanna take these?
Jerry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Hold on, just give me a.
Anybody need a break? If I can say anybody need a break for five minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
I won't be here, my kid's graduating high school, so.
Congratulations.
Good luck delivering. Thank you.
Yeah. A motion to adjourn, uh, to, not adjourn, but.
Well, we got gravel pit two minutes.
Yeah.
I'm just, I mean.
Take a five minutes, take a five minute, uh, break. Call the zoning meeting back to order at nine twenty-nine P M. So we're on permit renewals, gravel pits. Chris?
Um, to summarize, um, I already did send you.
Yeah.
Photographs, um, amounts with, um, material and material out, oh. The whole Gerderall seem to be somewhat the same, Mr. Gerder's trying to figure out. Um, what he's gonna do with the property, he is going through and processing some, um. Materials and mulch out there, he's now, he's kinda contemplating, he wants to have a little bit of gravel operation. In the meantime, but he is stockpiling, you know, some material. It is have some chickens out there. And there is. Earth moving, but nothing significant, so. And we'll see you next year, um, I sent you the whole end table numbers and photos, everything seems to. They would be in order, yeah.
Any questions? So.
Do you want a blanket motion for all three?
Yeah, I was thinking you could do that.
I'll make one motion to include all three gravel pits, McBruder, Paul and Dibble. And that, in that the, um, gravel pit. Renewal permits be granted for another year for all three.
Second.
Good. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, although in favor signal by saying aye, aye. Close. Same, passes five zero zero. Thank you. This, maybe representative, that's staff reports.
Okay. So. Staff reports. And we had a request from. Pam. The story, who's the operations manager. Of the town facilities. And the request is to put in eight by twelve shed on the side of the turf field. Um, it would be ten feet from the line, eight foot seven inches in height. Um.
So it's in high school.
Yeah, one, 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 at Boston Pose Road.
Okay, at the high school, high school field, right?
And it's to store the turf field. Sporting equipment in the spring for games.
How many sheds do they have to store your equipment already?
I, I didn't count, but I don't think there's one at this field. So the question is, would you like to see this as a modification to the special exception permit? I did make you some copies. Um.
Is there limited the number of accessory buildings such as sheds?
No. Not that I'm ordering. Well, there's a lot of uses though on this property too.
Yeah.
Lot of uses and a lot of accessories.
It could end up with a shed for each and every sport.
Could be.
Could be, yeah.
I need one more.
Well, I think.
I just, I figured just, just to.
Oh, fair, fair, okay, fair, I can give you. Okay, that's fine, that's, we got.
Yeah, you're gonna shoot her.
I think some of these, I just trying to save. Okay, that's fine. For a second. That's, I'm sharing.
That's the way. I'm following, I'm following. That's good, now for the end of the, um. You know, just about. I mean, you know what, that's the favorite day, that's the cool stuff. Setback from the property line, but. This sounds, sounds right.
Yeah.
Cause the. Oval pit is pretty close to a road.
Yeah, they're, they're those.
I can do it that way, anytime.
So the question is, do we want them to come? Go zoning meeting, or would we want? Handle it administrated.
I agree.
All in agreement.
Alright, that's good.
I can give a haul, any question, there's actually a tracker field stuff all over the place. We never got a shed.
Yeah, well, they're special.
Landing pits for high jump, they're not soft cushy things like air cushions. They're put truck tires and fishing nets. You had to put your sweats on top so you wouldn't get hurt.
Anything else?
Okay, the, um. Next thing is that Fenwick Ice Cream, um, they are gonna put the bollards, they're gonna put blocks up for the upper seating area. Um, they have to take the signs down in the right of way.
Yeah.
Um, but they also would like to purchase this hot dog truck that would be parked. By the seating area so that they could cook hot dogs outside. In the summer months, they thought it would be.
Wow.
Fun, so it wouldn't be mobile vending, they would park it.
So it'd be a permanent structure.
Yeah. So you could have a hot dog in the ice cream.
So they're saying.
There was only hot dogs.
Inside.
Inside.
Oh, they were, okay.
The lobster rolls.
The lobster rolls was the Mother's Day, um, event. Grand opening event, but apparently. Even though it was very well received. Um, the, the lobster smell and the ice cream smell really did mesh, so they didn't think it was a good item.
Okay.
They, they would like to go through, and this property, as you remember, is a special exception permit for. Um, it had multiple retail restaurants.
Yeah.
And I think we might have done office use, um, so they would like to in the winter months kind of expand the menu. Because ice cream doesn't really sell as well when it's forty below zero, to maybe add some sandwiches or some other items. They do have the hot dogs. So the thought with this would be if they bought it and parked it. It could be used outside and would be.
Dimension, dim- dimensions of the hot dog. Selling thing, whatever it is, whether it's a vehicle.
I didn't measure, I didn't ask for.
But they should provide the dimensions and specify on the plans where it's gonna be. And which way it faces and any signage there on and. We got, we have Johnny ads on the south side with an ice cream addition, now we'll have a ice cream on the north side with a Johnny ads addition, right?
Right.
So I know in the past, this is a little bit, I don't know, I'm assuming this is street legal, I'm not sure. I mean, the past, we've had situations where we've had. Little pub and I think Jackrabbits. Were in Cloud Nine, where they had an accessory truck that they could serve food, but they had the restaurant on the business, I. Were in Cloud Nine where they had an accessory truck that they could serve food, but they had the restaurant on the business, I think.
They did.
It's somewhat similar, obviously, this is not as large, they do have an ice cream truck that's parked on the property that they use for. I guess special events and maybe it does some mobile vending.
It does mobile work.
This is another.
Well, that, that, if it's gonna be a permanent entity just on that location. We need to know where it's gonna be located and how it's gonna be permanent.
Make sure that the trash is accounted for and the trash pickup is uh, can accommodate all the additional stuff that comes from the added. Hot dog supply and.
If it's gonna take up an additional parking space.
I don't know if he's proposing in all honesty, he just sent this today and said he was considering buying it, having it stationary, um, or was yesterday. And.
Well, if it does take a parking space, how does that, how's the calculation hold up?
Right, right, I think he's gonna be okay, cause the seats are less. He's got, I think he's got more.
Can't you put this uh, whatever this thing is, depending how big it is up on the, where the picnic tables are, out of the parking area?
Now, what, what are the hours? Is he gonna put lighting on it? No music?
Alright, so if the. Location is on the grass or does not attract to the parking space, he can show trash control. Um, if it's on, preferably maybe in the picnic table areas on the grass and has the same hours and has no music or lighting. It could be permissible? Or do you wanna see?
It should be parked, it shouldn't be parked on that spot.
To be parked towards the rear.
Has to be on the side or rear of the.
I always think of the spot where you put the picnic tables.
Well, where people respond up to it, right?
And where it's safe that people are watching the parking spaces.
If it meets, it, it, that's all satisfactory, you could handle.
You have to get approval from the health department, um, but I think the person who currently owns it has. I mean, it does have, I didn't take all the, print all the pictures, it does have hand washing sinks and so forth, and so it's something.
Well, that's, that's up to him then. Okay.
It is key. Alright, with that. Yes, um, just, we did send out our annual kind of friendly sign letters reminding people of the regulations. Um, later on this summer, I probably will have some help to. Continue enforcement and start writing the friendly letters again, um, it looks as though. Uh, we were approved for the Board of Finance to have a part-time person to come in and kind of do some assistance. Uh, in this budget, which we're kind of doing a little bit already, we're formalizing that as of July first. Um, so the hope is some of the things, um, as well as CASU training, that this person can. Start to help take care of a lot of this little stuff, so I can focus on the bigger picture, not that these little things aren't real. I'm working on your regulation changes, I didn't think tonight was a good night. To bring in what we had, it may not be a good night at the next meeting either. Um, the one thing um, that I was thinking about adding. And kind of to keep it separate from the application tonight, it doesn't really seem clear. From the regulations and public improvements about this whole fire tank situation. And maybe we should draft a zoning regulation for fire tanks, not just for. Subdivisions or residential developments, but I think we're gonna run into the same situation with commercial developments. Um, and maybe we should learn a little bit more about them, because it's my understanding, if you have the, these water tanks, you, you can't have sprinklers. In the building, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it's something I think we should look into, because. Um, there, there's gonna be more and more situations. Where we don't have water, and there's certain areas of town where public water, and we've learned this through the planning commission over the years. You may not be able to pipe public water to these areas because of railroad crossings and other things, despite the cost, it's just not feasible. So.
A very long time ago, I think Chester was the Z E O, there was something to do with the Connecticut Water Company, which is still the water company. That had written. That if you were within a hundred feet of the water line and you had a well problem, you were obligated to connect to the water line. I'll have to look at some stupid.
There, there's still a regulations in place and subdivision has regulations within the hundred feet. But the, I think it was a hundred feet, I have to look at it, but the problem is, there's certain things you could be within that distance. But you're not gonna be able to rip up a railroad track to connect. So, um, you know, and other things, highways or, so, um, that's where this whole idea came up with. You know, having fire protection sources, you know, on the, on the site, but I think we need to learn, learn a little bit about. How to gauge them for different development types, I learned quite a bit in general in the past. Week or so, so I'll try to put something together and get some feedback on that, I can add this to your next meeting. Your next meeting, you've got thirteen thirty-three Boston Post Road. Um, that was originally, it came to you, it was a preliminary discussion for a car wash. Um, and an oil change facility, uh, the new application is just for the oil change facility. But has a configuration that. They could potentially put the.
The half of what we saw in the preliminary discussion.
Except the one across from the Dairy Queen.
The building's big.
Yeah, yeah. So why they scaled back? They really didn't say.
So with that, we have continuation of this.
And then I could add the rate changes on the end, but I think we're not, I mean, if we feel like it. We push it into July.
Push it into July, cause I think those two in the next session would be a lot.
We're gonna, we're gonna get to the chickens and the roosters?
July.
That's July.
Okay, the rooster.
Okay, and I think Bob, I sent you. A draft, Bob made some comments in January, and then I started to address them about zoning rights. And then I got into the parking and my head started spinning, so I. Just went back to Bob with, so maybe we can even meet if you want.
I got, I got it, I didn't work.
Maybe we should meet and go through it, you wanna meet and go through it? So, and if there's anything else, I just kind of. Add them to the list, write them, and then when you're ready. I'll take care of it.
What happened with the uh, big lobster that couldn't go on the roof?
The, we're waiting, the lobster, um, my understanding is there. I don't know if the lobster is still getting.
Refurmed?
Refurmed or beautified, but it's coming. Another coat of makeup.
Heads prevail, yes.
Any, I mean, it's, they have to, you know, put a pad on the roof, it's not like when you just drop it on the roof, there's a little more, but. They're all permitted and ready to go.
Oh, wow.
It's up to them.
I must, I must have missed that meeting where that was discussed.
That was the zoning board of appeals, oh, so it's not allowed.
Yeah.
So for. For your zoning entertainment, you can use Chat G P T, it's free, or Google Gemini, also free. And you put in a question and it will bring back a response. A artificial intelligence generated trigger somewhat, but a response that's relative to your question. And then you can use that to add more questions and layers. So I asked, which soils are best suitable to septic systems? And it gave me a list of soils and favorability from sandy and loamy, and then you get to gravel and clay is no good. And then which soils are suitable, that are suitable for septic, are located along the Connecticut shoreline? And so then it starts taking some things out, and then you specify Old Sabrook, and it actually said that Fenwick has great soils for septic systems. And Charper Beach is not, is. And so, it, I look at it and I say, I already knew all this stuff, but if somebody had no clue as to what. This, this leads up to, they, this might be useful to educate people so that you don't have to spend trying over and over and over telling the same thing. That, um, if we're soils based density with regard to housing uh, density stuff, the soils are critical.
Right.
And if there was a map of wastewater management or W P C A or somebody that had the good soils, you could say. This is where it would be good, and don't bother applying if you're over there in the swamp, it's not gonna work. Anyway.
Jerry, some.
Play, play with the artificial intelligence, read about it, cry it out, never pass anything, you may be amused at what you get, yeah.
So what is it, just a, a, like your web page?
Yeah, just type in Jack G P C.
Tried at work, cause sometimes it takes me so long to compose an email and maybe.
A lot of people use that.
I should.
Yeah, but you get.
Everybody else.
Oh, yeah.
Really proofread, because it's a pop.
Motion to adjourn. Thanks, bye Bob, please, man. Any discussion, all favor, aye, thank you everyone.